You're good? Okay.
Yep.
Ron? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. It's March 3rd. The Ashland Public Schools is committed to being at the forefront of student achievement by preparing students to be college and career-ready while promoting independence, respect, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed as problem solvers in the 21st century. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. We will start with the opportunity for the public to be heard. I don't know if we have any achievement tonight, do we, Barbara? No achievement. We don't have our student rep update. I don't believe... We will have a report from Mr. Adams when we discuss the budget, but we don't have any superintendent or assistant superintendent or curriculum reports or gifts and donations. So our special topics this evening, they're listed as one and two, but we're going to flip them. We're going to have a presentation on the teacher contract negotiations, and then we are going to discuss our FY '16 school budget, and then we're going to adjourn. So I'm going to start with the opportunity for the public to be heard. If there's somebody that would like to say something, please step up to the podium so we can hear you and people at home.
Give name.
I'm sorry?
Clearly, give name.
Yeah, please give your name, your address.
Or their role.
Or your role, if you don't live in town, and make your comments. Hello?
Hello, everybody.
I know your name, but you can tell us all, just so the folks at home watching.
Sorry, I have to read this off my phone. My printer wasn't working. For those who don't know me, I'm Andrew McKay. I was born and raised in Ashland. Five years ago, I came back and was... Now I'm teaching in Ashland in the Wellness Department. And one thing that a lot of people don't know is I'm obviously big into athletics, but, you know, just meeting different kids through athletics is really what motivates me as a wellness teacher. Because honestly, there's no one in this room who cares more about being from Ashland or Clarkor than I do. So I understand this is a tough kind of meeting for everybody. I'm here to discuss the potential cuts. Obviously, in a perfect world, we'd be level-funded, and I can do my best, being from the community, talking to the community, to try to make sure that that happens. So I'm shaking a little bit here. I don't know where to look. I feel like Ricky Bobby a little bit. But I get that people are defending their livelihoods. Oh, excuse me. And, you know, I just would like to speak on behalf of the Wellness Department and our whole school district. Because it seems like it's something that is one of the first to go. And not just high school athletics, but wellness throughout our school districts. I think that our major problem right now with the youth of America is mental health. And by cutbacks in our wellness, we're really... We're not... I think we're thinking short-term, and I know that there's a lot of people here who have a major responsibility to think of Ashland as a whole. But I just want to advocate for wellness. As someone who, in five years, has been at different mental facilities, both with kids that I've worked with, not just as a coach, but as a teacher, which I'm more proud of than I am athletically, and just something to keep in mind. I know everyone is advocating for themselves, and it always comes back to kids, which you guys do a great job of making sure our kids are taken care of. But just understanding the impact in this challenging decision on what these kids can have and keeping it a place where everyone loves to be. And as an expecting father, I can't wait to move into this district because I know how much we do care about our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Lauren Wolf, and I'm the World Language Department Liaison at the high school. And I'm speaking on behalf of the World Language Department tonight. To start off, the academic reputation of Ashland Public Schools and of Ashland High School is well-known throughout the state of Massachusetts. As a district, we're able to compare ourselves to schools like Hopkinton, Holliston, and Dover Sherborne. These schools offer three or more world languages. And unfortunately, the proposed cuts to the world language program make it difficult for us to be... To continue to be competitive with those schools. My understanding is that the intent of these cuts, along with similar cuts at Ashland Middle School, is to eliminate the French from the curriculum over time. Ashland will become a one-language district. At the high school, we pride ourselves that a high percentage of our students take their world language class beyond the two-year requirement. And by eliminating choice, we risk students not valuing their forced choice and studying only the minimum requirement. The study of world languages, plural, is becoming ever more important in our globalizing world. The world language program in Ashland provides students the opportunity to travel abroad, to learn about different cultures, and to communicate with students in other countries. This spring, the World Language Department is taking students to London, Paris, and Madrid, affording both French and Spanish students the opportunity to use their language skills abroad. Madame Andrea is currently organizing a possible cultural exchange program with students in France. Also, so many graduates of Ashland Public Schools have greatly benefited from the study of world languages. They are studying abroad, working abroad, and using their language skills on a daily basis. For example, Nick Grimes, class of 2013, is currently working at the American Embassy in Paris as a part of his co-op at Northeastern. And by the way, he took both Spanish and AP French at the high school. People make decisions about where to live based on the quality of public schools, and deciding to offer only one language sends a message that schools aren't valued. So please consider the impact that these cuts will have on our community. We do not want to be a one-language district.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, but my name is Stephanie Sigmund. Been working on... And I prefer if I not list my address because I'm a prosecutor and really don't like my defendants being able to find me so easily. And the internet is worse... Bad enough. And the reason I'm here tonight and have been distributing a letter that has been distributed to folks on the school committee board, as well as members of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Town Manager, and actually have meetings set up with Representative Santa Candro, is because we're really concerned, as parents, about what's happening to the Ashland Public Schools. Just as means of background, after serving in the Navy, my husband and I decided to move in Ashland 14 years ago. And one of the reasons, the driving force for us to move here, was the great schools. We didn't want to move to a place where the schools weren't going to be supportive of our kids and offer them the same opportunities as other kids in surrounding neighborhood. And Massachusetts is a well-educated state. We spend... We pride ourselves on the education we give to our kids. And it's been concerning over the last 10 years to see cut after cut after cut to the schools, to the point where they've been cut to the bone, as you all know. And so the parents put together... And we got 609 people to sign onto the letter indicating that we wanted... We supported Superintendent Adams' budget, the budget of 2.6 million, to ensure that there wouldn't be any more cuts, that there wouldn't... There'd be opportunities for our kids. They wouldn't be eliminated now. And one of the proposals was 19 positions, now affecting every child throughout the system. My understanding also of the... Over the guest... I learned all this over the last two weeks, is that per pupil spending in our town is at the bottom third of the state. It's below the average. And that, to me, is unacceptable. It's something that we should... And especially when we're thinking about property values. And what was striking amongst the emails that I received, and I received hundreds of emails over the last... In six days, we got 609 people to sign on. That's just very, very surprising that we had that much interest. But one of the other things was that people are thinking about moving. They'd rather go to places like Framingham, where they have more opportunities, than stay in Ashland. And that was one of the places we considered, and we said, "No, the schools aren't good enough. We want to go to Ashland." The other concern was, and this is not just merely speculative, people have already moved out of Ashland because the schools... Because of the cuts to the schools. And the concern that this community, this town, does not support the schools enough. And they want to make sure that their kids are doing well. The MCAT scores, I think there's a misperception that every school in Ashland's doing great, when they're not. The MCAT scores for fifth grade, for fourth grade are not great. I don't... I have the numbers, and sorry, I wasn't going to speak today. I'm speaking at the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night, but... Oh, here they are, sorry. But one of the numbers, when they did the rankings, was we were like 500th here, 537 out of 930 for fourth grade math. You know, that's not the top schools. That's not the... You know, we have work to do. And I think you've got... The schools have done an incredible job. My kids have been blessed with the same... Some of the best teachers. But you're... There's limited resources available. You need specialists. You need the ELL teachers. And in the budget, that's the concern we have. The parents are concerned about the future of the schools, and we don't want to see any further cuts. And I have to echo, I think, the... I'm sorry, the gentleman that just spoke. I mean, it is really important to have freshman sports. I mean, to eliminate that whole entire program, and I know there's a new budget you just passed around, to me, it's really scary. Because I actually, as a prosecutor, I work with, you know... I see crime, and I don't prosecute some of the crimes that we're talking about here. But needless to say, I work with law enforcement. I understand that. And then not having those opportunities and to compete for scholarships, that's also another concern that we have. And I probably just spoke too much. But I just wanted you to know that we, parents, care. We don't want to see any more cuts. We want all the kids to have textbooks in the class, which there's not enough textbooks in some of these classes. Do we understand this? This is not acceptable. And we just want to see, you know, in the direction of the town, I hope, is that we're going to support the schools more and give them the money they need to continue to excel. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Who wants to follow that? Anybody else? Really, we'd love to hear from anybody who wants to chime in. Okay. So we're going to move on then, okay? We're going to start just with... We have some major budget drivers, and we are talking about budget tonight. And we're going to start talking about our negotiation process and our teachers' contract because that is the biggest budget driver. That's the biggest expense in our budget. Takes up... The number's not going to be exact, but around 80% of our budget. And there have been some questions about, most recently at the last Finance Committee meeting, about our results with our teachers' negotiations and its impact on our budget. And we wanted to clear some things up for the community about that process, what it involved, how we reached the results, what it means to our budget. And Marcia and I were on the negotiating team, and we put this presentation together. Marcia's going to start, and I'm going to take the second half, and hopefully, everybody will have a better understanding of what that process was about when we're finished. So... So as Lori said, we had concerns raised, and we feel that it's always appropriate for the citizens of Ashland to have concerns and to ask questions. And it is certainly always the right thing that we make sure that our hard-earned tax dollars are being spent appropriately. There's no question. Oh, what do I push? See, education.
Click down to move forward.
Okay, that I can do.
And up to go back.
Awesome. So as Lori said, salary costs are the bulk of our budget. School budget's the bulk of the town budget. Teachers' Union is our biggest bargaining unit. So this is where we should pay close attention. So it's entirely appropriate to talk about how it was negotiated, and this is what we're going to try to do tonight. So the first thing, see if it works. Nope, wrong one. All right. So who do we have to negotiate on the... Our participants? Well, first thing we did as a school committee, we assembled a team. We took our two most senior members. Lori and myself were the two most senior. Lori works as an attorney, so negotiations would obviously be one of her strong suits. For myself, I had served on a previous negotiation committee, and actually, because the three-year terms and the contracts are three-year terms, this is the third teacher's contract in my nine years on school committee that I've sort of been a part of. So that was how we chose who was on the school committee, who represented us. Brooke Clenchey is a superintendent, and Barbara Duran sat in. Barbara has negotiated. She sat with me three years ago when we did it the last time, and she has, in addition to that, negotiated all the other contracts that we do. Because this is our largest union, but we negotiate several contracts. So Barbara is very well... And plus, Barbara is our financial guru. She is the woman you want in the room because she knows our numbers. Liz Valerio, this is the first time that we've had an attorney sit with us. So we had a new attorney, and I just want to read you a little bit of her bio. She has extensive experience representing clients in collective bargaining arbitrations and before state and federal agencies. She's a founding member and past president of the Massachusetts Council of School Attorneys and an attorney affiliate of the Mass Association of School Committees, former co-chairperson of Arbitration and Dispute Resolution Committee, and on. She served on, in her personal life, on her Rentham Personnel Board. She was a member of the Rentham School Committee for six years, and serving as the chairperson, and has been on the Rentham Town Government Study Committee. And it goes on. My point is, she knows her stuff. She was on our side. She was working for us, and it's her job to get us the best deal we can get. For the other side, we had, obviously, the AEA president, and their building reps. And they were represented by Phil Katz, who represents them for the MTA, who also has his own credentials, along with Ms. Valerio on the other side. He represents the union and has, you know, has long experience there. So those were the people assembled around the table. Town manager was not present at these meetings. He, later, as you will come to see, is part of the group that signs off on this contract when that happens. Okay, the next thing. So this slide is really just to tell you... Because the only thing the public sees, because this is all done under executive session, the public sees us come into public session at the end of this long process and sign a contract. So it might be easy for people to think that, "Wow, that was quick." No. We started in January, and we ended in June. Over that time, we had 13 negotiating sessions, and the dates are listed there. Prior to even beginning negotiating sessions, the school committee comes together in executive session. If you ever watch us, we, you know, we adjourn into executive session to discuss matters relating to collective bargaining. That is legally required... Legally allowed to go into that executive session so that we can figure out a negotiating strategy. We did that before we even started in January. Those conversations started. Before each of those negotiating sessions, typically, we would meet prior to that, prior to the meeting, say, we started at four with that whole round of people. We would sit and negotiate and discuss with our attorney and with us in the room what we were going to cover that day, what we needed to do. Then the process continues with a memorandum of understanding to the town manager on 8/26 of where we stood. And then in September of 2014, the school committee must... Goes into vote and voted in favor of this contract, as did the town manager. All throughout that process, we would come back into executive session with our committee, Lori and I, with the full committee, to give them updates as we went. So this is a very slow and deliberate process. We took our time. We did not leave any stone unturned. So what were the terms that we agreed to? Well, steps and lanes. Everyone has probably by now heard about this, steps and lanes. What is a step? Step is what you get when you add another year of service to the town of Ashland. That happens for the first 12 years that you work in Ashland. So every year, you've been here another year, you achieve another step. Once you get past the top step is 12 across the board. So once you get to 12, you no longer are eligible to get steps. A lane is what a teacher would get if they increase their education over the course of the year, if they earn a master's degree, if they earn certain credits. As they do that and move across... So if you picture the salary chart as a grid, you're moving across, perhaps in lanes, and you're moving up in steps until the top right corner, you're done. You've got all the education you can get, you've got as many steps, and you're way up in the top corner. That's what teachers are doing. All the while, they're getting COLA, and that's... Those are the numbers at the bottom. The cost of living increase is the one thing that everybody on the chart gets. They get a cost of living, and that's a negotiated amount. The longevity that you see there is a reflection, and again, this is all negotiated, that's a reflection of who the teachers' union is representing. So remember, I told you, you're moving across that grid, either up and down and across. If you've been here many, many years and you've achieved your top education, you're getting the COLA, and your peers are getting those other things. So longevity gets negotiated into a contract. After 28 years, you get a lump sum payment. After 13, 18, and 23 years, you also... You get $100. That's a reward for sticking with us and being a long-term teacher. That's what you see there. So those were the contract terms that we agreed to. This continues with our contract terms. We have, in the first year of the contract, if you were at the top step in any of those categories, any of those lanes, again, your top step, you're no longer getting a step. So you get a single $300 payment, 15. You get a single $100 payment in the second year. And in the third year of our contract, we will pay out $300 to, again, those people. What I want to say about these steps and lanes and all of that, and how this all impacts the budget, which people need to understand, it's very complex. But in all the years that I've been on school committee, we have had a struggle to balance our budget. One of the ways that we do it every year is that we have teachers who have been with us for a long time, who are earning at top cat salary capacity. They're retiring, and we're going to bring in a brand-new teacher. And we take that net that we save and we apply it to the budget, and it's the only way that we haven't sustained worse cuts over all these years. Well, the flip side of when you do a strategy like that is what are you doing? You're bringing in new teachers. New teachers who, every year, are increasing their education, increasing their steps, and it's going to... You're going to see it in the budget. So you will see that in our budget because we have a staff full of young teachers. The last thing on that list is changes to coaching stipends to align with the average TBL. So what that reflects is that we looked at our coaching salaries. We did a lot of analysis of what coaches were earning across the Tri-Valley League, across local towns that are not in the Tri-Valley League, but essentially, it was Tri-Valley League. And we concluded that our coaches were severely underpaid. Now, what we need to do is look at our labor market and make sure that we're paying people properly and keeping talented... Retaining our talented staff. So we did make some changes in those coaching staff to allow for that. So we adjusted. So that takes care of that slide. Negotiation guidelines. So as I just said, we looked at our local market. What are our competitors doing and what are they paying? We looked at towns with a similar ability to pay. We were responding in our negotiations to the union's questions and issues. Over the last few years, their health insurance has changed. They have had increasing mandates that they need to take care of. We are doing a lot of new things, and so our teachers came to us with, "Well, these are some concerns we have. We need to respond to those." That's what good faith negotiation is. And this last one, obtaining the recommendation from the attorney was key. Because our attorney was negotiating not only our contract, but contracts all over. She knows what's viable. She knows what's being settled. She looked at what else was happening, not only in Ashland, but in our neighboring towns. And we relied on some of her guidance on that. And we also had past practice in mind in terms of COLAs. We weren't going to accept COLAs that were out of line with anything that had ever been negotiated. But here's the most fundamental thing that I want to tell you as a fellow taxpayer. We pushed for the very best deal we could get. We went to that table every single time, trying to get the best bang for our buck for the town of Ashland. Now, the teachers were trying, as is their responsibility, to get the best deal for their employees. That's what negotiations are, and we all negotiated in good faith. And after all of those meetings, this was the deal we came up with. So that gets me to what is our per pupil spending. So our per pupil spending, and one of our speakers brought this up. For FY '14, if you go to the DESE website, this is all available. The FY '14 spending is up there for every town. If you look at how it's calculated, I really like these numbers. Because when people are giving you data, you always want to ask, you know, "How good is the data? Are they comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges?" Well, the per pupil expenditures are calculated from information provided on each district's end-of-year financial report. It's a comprehensive report that is verified through careful review of the data, and then all of that stuff is audited. So when you look at per pupil spending for Ashland and compare it to another town, you know that everybody prepared the same report, put the same numbers in. So how does Ashland's compare? As we said, we are in the bottom third of the Massachusetts, all cities and towns here, for where we are. There's a range there for what, you know, what the highest number is to the lowest. I will say, there, of course, are variables that will account for higher and lower spending in every community. What I would like you to get from this is, you know, is Ashland an outlier? Are we, like, somewhere doing something? Are we... You know, there's been some charges made that we're overpaying. I say that number shows you that we are right, at least in a good spot in that regard. Perhaps we should be better. And this would be my... The last slide before I turn it over to Lori, which is, again, to look at our average teacher salary and the COLAs that have been awarded for some local towns. You see where Ashland is. They're ordered... Ashland's down towards the bottom in terms of average teacher salary. This is for FY '13 from the DESE website. That is the most recent year for which salaries are available. So if you look at those numbers, again, Ashland is not an outlier. We are in a good spot in terms of, if you ask whether we did a good job negotiating in prior years, I would say yes. And if you look at the COLAs that were awarded, again, we are right there where we need to be. So I'm going to pass the little clicker down to Lori, and she can continue to walk you through what we did. Okay, I might need a lesson, too.
One of these two.
Okay. Okay. So just continuing on, the rest of these slides are really just, you know, where do we fit in and who are we comparing ourselves to? So I'll say just another word or two about this slide that Marcia just introduced. Of all the towns on there, I think only Holliston would be considered probably the most like us in terms of their ability to pay. But you will also see towns listed that are either in the TBL or in our immediate vicinity. And the reason why they're important, and we discussed this with our attorney, is because we're competing for the same employees. Somebody that no longer wants to work in Ashland will typically look at the same towns in the local area unless they're moving, you know, out of the area. So these are our competitors, but again, for different reasons. On the next slide, we are comparing ourselves to similar ability-to-pay districts. And here's what's going on right now this year. And the way that we find out which communities are similar to ours is if you go...
And, and the way that we find out which communities are similar to ours is if you go onto the DESE and you look at the Chapter 70 analysis, it, it considers everything. It considers what's coming into the town for revenue, property taxes, EQV, enrollment, all sorts of things. And these are the towns that are very much like Ashland in, in terms of all those qualities. And also, in connection with working with our school committee advisors at MASC, they also took a look at my list and agreed that this, these were the right towns to compare ourselves to. So, for this year, you see that, I think, other than Holliston, we are the lowest of the COLAs on that particular list with other ability-to-pay districts. And this is just a graph that sort of represents where we have been in comparison to some of those towns that have the similar ability to pay. This is Grafton. This is Holliston. This is Hudson. And I, I know this isn't very easy to read, but this is really more for anybody's information who wants to look a little bit further into this, Hanover's and other community that we are compared to. And if you go onto the DES website, DESE website, they compare all sorts of things, where we're at with scores, enrollments, where we're at with per pupil spending, where we're at with required net spending and actual net spending, and really just about any piece of data that you, you want to plug in to find out how you compare to others. The budget impact for us here in Ashland, the impact, and that's pretty much what we're talking about right now with respect to this budget and I think what's been raised in, in other, in other meetings. This is, this is our budget impact. $319,000 for the step increase that Marcia was talking to you about earlier. $129,647 for the lane changes. $313,340 for the COLA. And we have a reserve set aside for contracts and other units that have not yet been negotiated, as well as administrators or any other employees that are outside of the AEA. And so, the total budget impact of the 2.5 million and Mr. Adams' initial budget request, over a million of that accounts for just the budget impact from the, the most recent negotiations. I, I will add too, just out for Mr. Adams, I know he sent out an executive budget summary that also talks about per pupil spending. And he has a, we're still in the bottom third either way, but the number that he has there is from FY13. The FY14 numbers, I understand, just recently became available, and I think they're still preliminary for the most part. But in either case, whether you're looking at his executive summary or whether you're looking at these slides, we fall pretty much right in the same general bottom third. And, and that's really it, as far as the negotiations are concerned and the impact in the contract. We really just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that process and understood that it was, you know, it was approached very sincerely, with a lot of effort on all sides. We feel that it was a fair result for all involved. We're proud of the work that we all did. We're, we're very happy to pay our teachers fairly. And we, we think it was a good result, and we think it was the right result for Ashland. And there's no more important aspect to it than the most important asset that we have here in this town are our teachers. And it's, it's been written about in texts and articles, and any superintendent, any instructional leader and teacher will tell you that, and Mr. McKay was even saying it earlier, that the person in front of our kids is, is the person that has the most impact. So, we take, we take this very seriously in making sure that we're getting to the right result. And we feel that we did. And we, we just wanted an opportunity to explain that before we get into the next piece of our discussion, which is the overall budget. Thank you. Your turn.
Thank you. So, I just want to start by, by saying it's, I had this comment this morning with our administrative team, and it's been an interesting process for me as well, as a first-year superintendent, to, to really dive deeply into a budget and to present from the initial executive summary to where we are today. I think it's really important for everyone here to understand that when I, and I charged our administrative team to go through this process, we were acting in good faith with regard to what was expected from us, from the finance committee, as well as Board of Selectmen, in terms of a process. Looking at an outcomes-based or performance-based budget, trying to determine what is it that we need and require for the Ashland Public Schools, not only to maintain a level of expectation, but I believe I was hired as superintendent to increase our, our achievement level in this district. I agree that we have achievement gaps, especially at our, our younger levels, where we're not meeting those. And as we go through a process of looking at our, our current budget and what I might present tonight to you, is that there's potential for those achievement gaps to continue to grow. And to me, that saddens me. As an educator, as a superintendent, the people who've entrusted me with moving our district forward, it's been, it's been a very painful process for me. So, that being said, I, I think some might call me naive when I presented a, a $2.5 million increase. There will be some in the community who say, well, you know our situation, and this is what you should have done. I disagree. It's not, my job is to think about the, the 2,600 students in our district and those families, and, and to be faithful to the committee that has hired me, to do the best we can for our school district. That being said, I am a former accountant, and I, I am a realist. And I do understand much, in much greater detail today than I may have back in November when we began the process about town funding and about town finances, and what that means to an overall community. And I certainly understand the limitations, and Ms. Duran understands the limitations, and the school committee understands the limitations that this community has in terms of the revenue generation. And over a 10-year period, if you looked at the executive summary, we've continued to eat away at our staffing. We, we may have added staff in certain areas. Mr. McKay mentioned health and wellness, as well as social-emotional well-being. We have added staff. We've seen the need of our students in our district of mental health, depression, anxiety. We ha, we need to educate all of our kids in this district. And we have to find a way to do that. What I'm about to present and to the school committee, while it doesn't meet what I believe is, is the budget that we should be proposing, is the, the $2.5 million increase, I've gone through 20 iterations, to say the le, of, of the budget scenarios. I've had conversations with community members, with teachers, with administrators, with the school committee, with my administrative team. Nothing I'm proposing to you comes without much thought and pain. And I just, I want to just preface my comments as we approach this budget that I'm about to present, it's not, it's not ideal. It's not perfect. It's not what I want. It's not what our community needs. That being said, I, I do have an understanding of the fiscal responsibility and the fiscal constraints that we have as a community. So, for those who are here in the audience, I, I just want to point out two things, those who are watching at home. There's a slide that we'll be presenting, but not both slides. Because I think, for those who are here, you'll, you'll notice a proposal, and then there's also a narrative sheet. And I want to just bring attention to the sheet. So, I, I'm not going to go through these all in detail, but you get an understanding. I'm calling these the, and I will post these to the website for families who are watching today at home. The 2016 budget implications and performance outcomes. So, if there's personnel added within this budget, what performance enhancement outcomes occur because of those additions? And then, if, if we have personnel reduced, what reduction in performance outcomes will occur because of those reductions? And I think that's really critical. When we're looking at presenting a budget, I do not believe any one of these recommended cuts are appropriate to move our district forward. If anything, it's continuing to push our district back. So, I want to, before I present, there are two pieces that you'll notice in this scenario that other people will not, if you've looked at the scenarios online, that you'll notice three or four significant things missing on these scenarios compared to the other scenarios. And they relate, one relates to the athletic piece that Ms. Siegman mentioned as well. The freshman sports, as well as the hockey program. Clearly, I heard from a lot of parents, and as a former coach, athlete, athletic director, all the way through, I understand and completely value the role athletics plays in, especially in public schools, and the ability for athletes to have another opportunity to grow and develop as individuals. So, in conversations with parents and the athletic director, Mr. Quigley, we're looking to spread those costs out among the 20-plus sports that we have. And that might include, for instance, not participating in another preseason game, where the transportation costs and the costs of, of officials. So, part of those are, are naturally ingrained in our overall budget. Looking at the user fee, I'm anti-user fee to begin with. I think the comprehensive high school experience or educational experience in this district, we should not be charging fees to our students to participate in chorus, band, drama, athletics, clubs, activities. I'm fundamentally against that. That being said, we have a, a family, a set of, group of family members who are saying, "Mr. Adams, we really value this program. What can we do? Can we analyze the cost of the hockey program?" That was the cut that was on those scenarios. "And come up with a, a fairer user fee for our sport because we do know that it's an expensive sport." So, working hand-in-hand with those families, we're able to take that, those cuts from all the scenarios that I originally presented off the table. So, those are not on any other scenario you will see. And, and I, you know, the conversations we've had today in our budget workshop, we, we have to remember, no matter where we end on a, on a bottom-line budget, these scenarios are scenarios. The school committee has the right and by, by law to look at what we have in the end, whenever that number's finally decided for our community, to modify and adjust based on our needs and whatever that number ends up being. And that's a critical piece, I think, for a community that's learning a little bit about me and my style in terms of communicating. I'm, I like to communicate. I've, I've told teachers, I was one of those teachers, five years in a row, where I was being on the cut line. I didn't find out until June, every single year, as they were negotiating contracts. I vowed as a leader to at least express, these are options that may be at our disposal. And you have to understand that, we're limited. So, just, that's my nature. That's how I operate. Some like it, some do not, that I'm honest and open about it, but I'm going to be that way. And because of that, we've received, I think, a tremendous amount of feedback. Therefore, you're seeing iteration, like I said, number 30, or whatever it is. So, my charge, I believe, is to come up with a number that will have the least amount of impact on the greater good of all the children in this district. Understanding that the budget scenario you have before you now does not meet my expectations or our needs for this community to move forward. Is it a Band-Aid? Yes. It's a one-year Band-Aid for sure. But this cycle will continue over and over. Because, and it has for the last 10 years, if you go back and look at our, our information in terms of the increase in dollars spent on our schools. So, the appendix that you have, which I've moved away from for a moment, was, describes that, what the outcomes will be with the additions and what will impact our outcomes should we make these cuts. I want to emphasize, it's not, the outcome isn't just high school graduation. I think a lot of people interpret, okay, you're a school system and, and your outcome is truly how your kids grad, if your kids graduate and if they go on to college. There's way more to what we do in this profession than those two things. Are we proud of 91% to 92% of our kids going on to college? Absolutely. Are we proud of our graduation rate and our low dropout rate? Absolutely. But it takes the pre-K through that 12th grade year to make that happen. And when we're impacting everything else, this is going to impact that, that final outcome, if you will. It's the outcome of how many students are ending up on special ed plans because we can't provide our, through our RTI process. So, the ability to step in and, and get kids the help they need before they get tested and move on to a plan where then we have other obligations. So, another part of the budget is this notion of out-of-district costs, special ed costs versus general ed costs. And I want to put to bed any of those concerns and/or discussions that are in a community. Out-of-district costs, some interpret as school choice. School choice is very different. I've heard this from, from members. School choice is when a kid who's in another district or in our district wants to attend another school system. There's a fee that goes from that sending district to the receiving district of $5,000. So, for example, we have more kids coming into our district because they believe we have a high-quality district than leaving our district. So, in the end, our revenue stream for our school system has increased because of our school system. Should our system continue to, you know, have dips in it, the school choice numbers, conversely, could leave. And we wouldn't receive those funds. So, that's just, that's one example. But the out-of-district placement, are students that we can't provide the necessary adequate education in our district? And those are students who are, are part of our population who, who do require special services. And next year, we anticipate students who have moved into our district, who quite frankly are, are fiscally responsible right now in other districts, become our responsibility beginning next year. And of that $2.5 million increase, $553,000 is that increase. Legal obligation to pay because we, as a district, cannot provide the necessary education for those children. It's a very important clarification because there are some who, to me, said, well, it's, how come you have such school choice, that, that number? It's not that. And the other pieces are English language learner population. I just want to address quickly. I asked Kathy Silver, Director of Student Services, today, where do we stand today compared to at the beginning of the year with our English language learners? And what we found out is we're at 106 now, today, with 99 at the beginning of the year, so seven. And we, I know for a fact, we have three or four that still haven't enrolled in our school system. And in that chunk of students, 84, 84 between K and V. That's a huge population where we need to meet those needs. And I don't believe even with this budget I'm presenting, we will fully comply with the mandates or meet those needs. Because our population increase is occurring rapidly. Our demographics are changing. That's what we have to come to grips with within our community. Enough of my pulpit. Looking at the budget, the budget I'm presenting tonight to the school committee for rec, for recommended approval or to go forward is a budget increase of $1.698 million. You'll notice that is a decrease of close to $800,000, over $800,000 from my initial $2.5 million. The, excuse me, 1.623, the number, I didn't change the number on the top. It's one, it's on the back page, if you will. 1, 1,623,972. And let me walk you through it, because I think it's really critical, that you understand, you can read in the appendix, the piece that I gave, why we're adding certain programs, and I'll only touch base on a few of them. But again, I looked at this as saying, how do we impact the least amount of kids through this process? And I've talked to some teachers, even today. It's not an enjoyable experience. So, taking into account salary increases, these are adds to exist, and you can see on the line, transportation costs, utilities, our, our new Envision's math program, we started this year, we're in the second year of a three-year contract to pay for it. this year, we're in the second year of a three-year contract to pay for it. The increase in the special education out-of-district tuition, which I just talked a little bit about. And, and for context, if you will, if you've been reading some of the papers, I believe Holliston, in their budget, is expecting a $1 million increase in their out-of-district next year. And their superintendent first request was over 12% of an increase. These are costs that are happening around the state. It's not just Ashland-specific. Then our increase in our summer programs where we provide, again, services to our student, our special needs students in, with summer programs, increase in contractual ability to pay for these students. Then you get into reductions. Now, the reductions you see initially are reductions that, I don't know if that shows it very well there. Any way to go down with this, Paul? No? Just scroll down a little bit?
Yeah.
Thank you. These are reductions that are impacting programs, okay? So, technology, curriculum, so professional development monies, system-wide retirements, you know, we're adjusting that number. We don't know specifically how much that will cost us, but historically, you know, Ms. Duran is looking at, in the end, how much we can reduce our initial budget from, based on her analysis. Athletics, those who don't think athletics is taking a hit, we're still cutting it with uniforms, scrimmage transportation, that's only a part of it, equipment to other sports. Someone emailed me, and I want to ensure you, that the football equipment repair, those are not, would never impact our safety. Let's be clear, okay? You might see equipment repair, it, those are not safety items, okay? And then we get into the personnel piece, and, and I think this is where we need to spend our time on, on these, these two areas. I've given this a lot of thought, and the first item you'll come across is the included version of the special education program, not even a special education program, I take that back, a, a program that meets the needs of, of some of our behavior, emotional, socially-challenged students that we've identified currently already in our system at the middle school level. And we know, based on historical knowledge, that it's quite possible some of these children could be outplaced out of district. It would cost the district a lot more money. And if you go back to the executive summary, I give an example of how this program, just this program alone, would save us money, short-term, but fiscally responsible long-term. As we see the increase of our student needs, we know that by developing this program in-house, we'll have less students potentially leaving our district to seek services elsewhere. That's not, that was not on any one of these other budgets, scenarios. But through conversation and understanding of what, again, fiscally responsible, looking long-term, not just a short-sighted version of this, we have to consider that. Then the next biggest thing, you know, we could go through line by line, but like I said, you have those performance enhancement, why things are important. The two full-time ELL teachers, I just explained it to you, that our numbers are increasing dramatically. And to provide the mandated services required, having two more teachers, again, I don't think, because of our increase, I still don't think we're going to end up meeting those needs. But we need to begin to control some of these costs that eventually could, could lead to, again, out-of-district placement, students dropping out. It's our, it's our moral and fiscal obligation to find a solution to this. And this is what's doing, this is part of what's doing it. You'll notice then, some other slight increases based on enrollment numbers. So, increasing at the high school, a .20 special ed position. If you flip it over, there's a reduction of a social studies position of a .2. Last year, when I was the principal of the high school, we had an agreement that the teacher, the special education teacher, wanted to step back for a year to be part-time to .8. That's 80% of the time being in the schools. So, I reallocated that to our social studies teacher at the time. So, now we're reallocating it back. So, when you see those two line items, it's, it's a net difference of, of adding that person back into the, into the fold. We noticed this year, by having that person out, that .2, we weren't meeting all of our requirements, the, the individual teachers were working like never before. But we need that position to be in the school full-time. Then as we go through, the neighborhood program, and ESP, and ESP for those who are listening at home, are educational support personnel. Some may consider them teaching assistants. There are a variety of names in, in other districts and what you may have grown up with. These are individuals who are supporting classroom teachers, students who are on individualized education plans. In addition to, they don't just work with those students, they're working with the entire class and, and assisting the teachers in helping meet the needs of all of the students in the, in the district. That's critical. And it's short money to me, in terms of the amount, to meet the needs of all students. No problem. So, so, the additions, again, no one in this room would be upset with the additions, right? So, let's cut to the chase and get to the, the backside of the paper and talk about how this will impact us going forward with our budget. And the first thing you want to look at, to me, is the last number, some will, first thing they'll say is, "Well, look, in your budget, you're adding, you're adding, you're right." We are. I'm asking to add some staff to help us meet our obligations and to do right by all kids. But in the end, even with this scenario, there's still a reduction of 3.35. It's actually more than that, 10.7, but a total net of 3.35 after we add in the positions First thing you see, the Director of Curriculum position. These are hard discussions. And right below it, you'll notice, "How are we going to fulfill, to fill those needs that we have?" I don't know. It'll be a challenge. So, we, we've had to add money back in to figure out how to work with teachers to become curriculum specialists within their schools. That will not ever replace what we have currently. There's more to the role in the curriculum instruction and assessment position. Grant coordinator, that's an individual that helps us write grants to bring in revenue for our district. But again, I'm just, I feel as though, you know, I'm always torn with these, we're talking about human lives and human impact. But my job is to look at this from, "How are we impacting kids on a daily basis? And can I present a viable option to the school committee that has the least amount of impact on our students?" The reduction of the ELL ESP, again, I, I know I'm talking about ELL, but we're, I'm proposing we actually hire two full-time teachers to meet the needs. An ESP doesn't have that same background and/or skill set to actually work with our kids at the same level. They're not a certified ELL teacher. Goes to the point, you know, Ms. Wolf talked about, about world language, and it's not just about the high school. It's about at the middle school. It's impacting the opportunities for our middle school and our high school students to take another, to have another opportunity to, to understand and to participate in a world language, in a culture, and to become more attuned to the rest of the world besides just us in Little Ashland. And I'm fortunate, I'm going on that trip with our world language students and our Ashland High School students in April. I know the benefit of having these programs. It pains me to even suggest these programs to be eliminated in partial or entirety. Again, what you'll notice with this proposal versus other proposals is I'm trying, you know, the lack of a better term, to spread out some of, of the pain that we're going to experience, that the least amount of impact on kids is my charge. And as we go through the process, you'll notice the grade-five teacher, I know that'll be a question that someone brings up. And let me explain, when we, part of our process is looking at enrollment numbers and understanding what is acceptable for classroom sizes, for classroom size. So, at the fifth grade level, we believe, it's the fourth grade moving into the fifth grade, right? So, the fourth grade class at Mendez is smaller than the outgoing fifth grade class. And therefore, reduction of a position there will increase the class sizes to between 23 and 24, which I don't like it, I wouldn't recommend it, but it's acceptable in terms of a, you know, in terms of a elementary class setting. Whereas, if we didn't cut it, just on the flip side, you should know that piece of it, the class size could be 19, okay? And 19 or 20. And that's, you know, that's really where we need to be, and the other classes across the district will be that, in that same level. There's an interesting one on here that wasn't there before, elimination of, of substitutes at Ashland High School for the day subs. And what that means is when teachers, excuse me, when teachers are out for professional development, maybe they're out sick, we hire people to come in and, our substitutes come in and, and monitor the classes. So, again, I'm a former teacher, and I get it. Do I think a lot of teaching is necessarily going on during those days? In some classes, yes. Some classes, no, depending upon the substitute as well. But we have to think creatively when we're challenged with, with a budget such as this. And I've had conversations with Principal St. Kerr, and I had even considered this as a principle beforehand, was thinking about, can we find another avenue for the, the students who are there to lessen the impact, again, on another potential cut for a teacher? And if it's a duty, if it's a dean picking up a position in terms of monitoring kids in a different setting, then those are things we have to do. And then you'll notice the, the cuts, a .2, a .4, a .2, and a .2, again, at the high school, it's about lessening the impact on all kids. One of the initial budgets that were scenarios, and I appreciate all the comments from, from the community with regard to art and music and drama, and, and understand, I completely value those positions, was one of the scenarios dealt with cutting an entire program. It's unacceptable. It was unacceptable by me to even consider that the first time through. So, the way the process has worked, it's maintaining those programs. Again, it's a Band-Aid for a year, but it's still an opportunity to keep programs alive. Because we all know, historically, over a 10-year period, once a program goes away, it doesn't come back. I am a victim of that myself as a former business teacher. Accounting programs, economics programs, they're gone when it was time to make cuts. They're not back in the system I was at, that I left teaching years ago. They're still not there. When we built Ashland High School and moved into Ashland High School, the year later, home economics, the business program, and other programs were cut. They're no longer back and have never been rebuilt into our programming. So, my recommendation to the school committee is to consider a budget of 1.6 million, $1,623,972, or a 6.3%, 6.38% increase over last year. I do not believe that is a number that our community deserves, nor do I believe these cuts will move our district forward. And for that, I apologize to you and to the community. That being said, I'm also, as I said at the beginning, a realist with regard to where we stand in our community with resources.
Thanks, Jim.
Questions? You all?
Comments? Questions? Who wants to start? We're distraught.
So, okay.
The least, yeah, the person who can speak right now should go first.
All right, so I can speak. I think we're in a miserable spot, and I don't think anybody's surprised to be in this spot. We've been in this spot for a long time. And I think we need to think short-term and long-term, and that's what I'm going to recommend that we do as a committee. I think there are, this town has, has long-term structural issues that we need to deal with. Proposition 2 and 1/2 was passed in 1980 and came into effect in 1982. Proposition 2 and 1/2 basically limits our ability as a community to raise, raise our assess, our, our levy, our tax levy, more than 2 and 1/2% every year unless we get an override. The exception to that is new growth. So, during all those years that the town was growing, that doesn't come under that 2 and 1/2 cap. So, all the years we had new growth, we were able to kind of keep up. We were always chasing, kind of keeping up, but not really. And everybody was worried that this day would come. Well, this day has not just come, it's come and gone and come and gone because I've been on this board, this is my ninth budget, and we are always, always searching for what is the best way to spread pain around. We are never, ever in a position to really do right by our schools, I don't think. And so, I think, you know, I would suggest that this town cannot continue to think about sustaining the, the community that we all would call home without really thinking about our financial structure and whether it can work on the revenue that, that we currently bring in. I'm not going to go into details about that tonight, that's for future discussions, but I will say that the best we can do tonight is come up with a short-term solution to try to bridge a gap that needs to be bridged. And, and no one should think that this is the end of the conversation because it can't be. And, and I would just, I would, I would go back to what Mr. Adams said about programs gone that never come back, and, and I, we can't say it enough that, you know, I, I suggested it in our pre-meeting, as one of the most obvious graphs that we could do to try to make this obvious to people, would be a simple line graph that shows that since 2005 to 2015, enrollment's gone like this. The severity of special needs, gone like this. ELL, gone like this. Other related mandates, gone like this, things like edebell. All those things are just increasing, increasing, and increasing. And what we haven't, what we've done in all of those years, when all of those needs have gone up, our staff numbers, if you can believe it, our FTE count has gone down. Since 2015, from 2005 to 2015, we are down a net 20, 20.5. And with what we're talking about tonight, we're losing another, after going through all this, another 3.3. So, you know, we're talking about, everything's going up except for our staff. So, how can we think that that's a recipe for success? And I think that's why everybody here is so speechless of the idea that once again, we're faced with these horrible- that once again, we're faced with these horrible, horrible choices. Nevertheless, we are elected to keep things moving. We need to get to town meeting with a balanced budget. We need a short-term solution. But I implore this town to step up and figure out a long-term solution. I love this community. I've lived here. I was born here. And it's my home. And I'm, I, I, I was raised and educated here. My children were all educated here. This is a wonderful community. And, and we should not abandon it. We should not say, well, it's not good enough, I'm leaving. I implore people to say, I'm staying and I'm fighting for what's right for this community, because this community is worth it. But that's a long-term conversation that I hope people will stick around for after this next few weeks goes by and we deal with this budget. As for tonight, I think we're going to need to, um, I would say heed Mr. Adams. He's, he's our expert. We hire him to be our expert and to look at what's the best way to work us out of this. I respect his opinion, and I respect the fact that he has taken everybody's opinions into consideration and reworked this budget over and over again with Mrs. Duran's assistance, always. And, um, so, you know, I'm prepared to support this budget. And again, we, we don't know what goes forward with this budget. We don't know even if they're going to come back and ask us to do, to do more. But at this point, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting anything less than this, certainly. So that's my piece. I said it, so you've all got time to compose yourself. You have to talk now.
Well, first, I do want to thank, uh, Jim and Barbara. I know they've been working round the clock trying to, um, address this situation. And they, obviously, people are coming at them from all different places, including us, including members of the community, as it should be. I mean, I think one good thing that's coming out of this is that, um, you know, the transparency of the budget process, and I have had so many people write to me and say, thank you to Mr. Adams for putting it out there. But it's certainly educated everybody about the process, and, and people are involved and interested. And that's really, I, I hope it's the way that it continues year after year, because these things just don't happen overnight. I have the list here of the cuts since 2005. And with the exception of one or two things, nothing is back. And, you know, it, this is a long-term problem that needs a long-term solution. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to be solved overnight. We do need a short-term solution. And, um, we were all very supportive as a school committee, regardless, forget what we can do with, um, the amount of revenue available. Mr. Adams' initial budget request is the budget that we need to open our doors in September and have everybody have what they need, meeting our mandates, and that's the right budget, money-wise, for this school system and this school committee. The reality is, um, you know, there's only going to be a certain amount of money available to us to meet our budget needs. And, um, I know the town is, is taking a look at, at their side, and I certainly hope that they will do everything possible. Everything on this list already is horrible. We, we hate every single thing on this list. We hate having to do it. Um, but we do have to be responsible, and we have to work with the community to, um, make sure that, um, you know, and, and as Mr. Adams said, he's trying to spread it around to make sure that everybody's taking a little bit of a piece of the hit here. And we certainly hope that, um, we don't have to cut anything else, because this is really, for me, this is the bottom line. It, it only gets worse, and like I said, it doesn't come back. And we really need everybody to be engaged and involved. And we're certainly gonna, as, as we have in the past, we'll, we'll move forward and we'll do the best that we can with what we have. But this can't be an acceptable place to land and, and stay and, and not do something about, not just trying to get out of this, but to, to move forward. I mean, if you look at things in other communities, and, and everybody's situation is different. I understand that. But, you know, we're certainly anywhere near where we want to be in terms of what we offer to our students. At the same time, you know, we're, we're proud of what we do. And I agree with Marcia. We should make every effort to use the resources we have and, um, and make it work. But it involves a lot of moving parts to come together to try to, so I, I would, you know, I, I'm supportive of the dis, of this to the extent that we have to be realistic. But, but I am very sorry that this is where, where this is going. Anybody else?
This is echoing the same. It's a short-term fix, and we do need to look long-term. And we need to continue those discussions with the other committees in town.
I'm sorry, I'm not at a point that I can speak about it right now.
I understand. You don't have to. Just want to make sure everyone has their opportunity. So, do we have a motion on this number? Or is there anything else that anybody wants to raise?
I would just ask that our staff stick with us.
Yes.
We do value our staff, and, and it's a tough time. Stick with us. We, we want the best for the system, as we know they do as well.
Okay. What we need is a motion to approve, um, 27,008,1561 as the, uh, school committee's bottom-line budget number. A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda for this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.